... With regards, in my diligence...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending.
Commissioner Crowell is absent. Commissioner Walters, Commissioner Reed...
Here.
Commissioner Whittington...
Here.
Commissioner Burgel...
Here.
Thank you all. I'd like to just open by stating a few things. We're a very tight community. We work together well. We have in the past and we need to continue to. There's some tough times before us. You know, since 2008, this board's made some pretty drastic cuts and consolidations. And we've been manipulating monies back and forth. Our financial coordinator severed his ties here a couple weeks ago, so we really had to scramble. And I just need to point out that our county treasurer and clerk were a considerable amount of help trying to get to this point. We have a whole lot of loose ends to tie up, and it's been stressful for everybody. But nevertheless, we just need to work together and get through this. There's such a thing as mandated and non-mandated services. And there's a delicate balance. And it's challenging for all of us to get through those times. But I assure you, like I mentioned the other day, this board's committed to working with MSU. And I know many of you are here from MSU. We just don't have the funds within our county budget at this point. We do want to sit down with MSU and work on their memorandum of agreement, see what we can come up with. Is there some great data apart? I had a phone call last night. Somebody interested in funding possibly the 4-H portion of that. They were wondering how much that is. It'll be my recommendation today, later on, to open up a revenue line for MSU, which we don't have, so people can contribute to that. I know myself, I would, and some of the others. So that's something that MSU's not had before, but it takes all of us kind of talking and working together to try to make some of these things happen. So again, we just all need to kind of try to stay calm today, and we can speak our piece. I'm going to try to give everybody a minute or so, because there's so many of us in here, and we'll get through this. So that being said, are there any public comments? And do we want to do public comments now, or later?
Do you come up to us?
Sure.
Is that how it works for you?
Either way.
So I was thinking maybe like five minutes, but we'll deal with that.
We don't have the time.
Of course, I here to support funding for MSU extension and all the valuable programs that it provides in the community. I want to preface my comments by saying, well, my name is Lisa Larson. I teach political science at Gladwin County. That's a subject that has a lot of debate, a lot of dissent in different topics that we talk about. And so I'm kind of used to this kind of controversy. I just want to make sure that nobody takes the comments personally. I don't know any of you personally. I assume that you're all good, good men, and that you have the best interests of Gladwin at heart. And I would hope that you would assume the same of me, although I'm not that. So I want to talk a little bit about the benefits of 4-H. My own daughter, she's seven years old. She's been a cloverbud this year. Showed her horse in the fair. Of course, that means that, you know, as a cloverbud, mom has to be in there. So mom ran the barrels and ran around the arena as well. But I have my own personal experience in 4-H. I grew up doing 4-H and showing horses and pigs and sheep in the fair. And for me personally, and I know for a lot of kids, it's an opportunity to develop leadership skills. It's an opportunity to develop a work ethic, right? Especially this time of year, as you're going out and breaking little ice in the water buckets. And I mean, it takes a lot of dedication and perseverance to take care of an animal all year round and raise it for the fair. Of course, it develops a lot of responsibility and notice. And, you know, as a parent, I appreciate having the opportunity to teach my child the responsibility to 4-H. So I see all of these skills that kids can build for citizenship and for life, right? I mean, these are the future leaders of Gladwin County. And I think that they deserve a piece of the county's budget. I understand, you know, that these are hard times. And like I said, I assume that you're all doing your best to work within the constraints that you have. And so I appreciate the work that you've done. You know, it strikes me that a lot of Gladwin County residents are in the same dilemma this time of year, especially with Christmas coming up. You know, and as parents, you want to do the best for your kids and provide opportunities for them. But sometimes it also requires a little bit of sacrifice and skipping even on the essentials sometimes. I ran some numbers real quick. I'm no expert in reading these kinds of budgets, but from what I can see, MSU extension is just a little over 1% of the overall budget. You know, it seems like we get quite a bit of bank or block when it comes to the MSU extension, especially considering the subsidies that we get also from the state and federal. And, you know, there are very few things in life that you actually get more than you pay for. And it seems like MSU extension is one of those things for Gladwin County, because we have support at the state and federal level as well. So that being said, I'll leave the floor to anyone else who would like to say a word here too.
Fisher, thank you for allowing me to speak. This concerns, and I come from a third generation, fourth generation of 4-H participants. Gladwin County alone, I believe, we have somewhere close to 300 individuals that participate in program. This program, it really affects not only the 4-Hers, but their families, their grandparents, the community involvement down here. I know that you're working hard to try and fund this. We've got great people that are lying down there at this office, and we really need them. This county really, really needs them. It affects these young kids, and like this lady just said, it teaches leadership skills. I mean, I started when I was nine years old here, and I consider myself kind of a leader, which I am 4-H, so you know. Very involved in program. And I'm not going to take up a 40 minute, but I would really appreciate, as well as these families here, the support from the county. It's a great program. And once again, there's great people in place that we work hand in hand with. If it takes us all, and if there's a way that we can figure a way to help fund this and make your opening statements, there's a lot of us that will contribute to service of the program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other public comments? No more public comments?
Hi, Debbie Nathan. I am the office manager of MSU Extension. There has been some talk about the 4-H program for MSU, and that is one of the programs. But that's not only MSU Extension. We have Paula, who does our food nutrition programming. We have Tracy, who does a lot of data management with MSU. And she's housed here. And that information is shared with the whole state. So the numbers that we use here at Gladwin County are generated through MSU Extension. So that information is valuable to Gladwin County.
That's present.
She is the base of MSU here in Gladwin County. Eagle Thurlow. She does egg for land. I don't know anybody in Gladwin who doesn't know Eagle Thurlow. Everybody asks me, what is it like to work with Eagle Thurlow? My job at MSU Extension is to make sure that everybody who needs that information from MSU Extension can find the right person to talk to. MSU Extension's been here since 1914. We do the math. We've been here for 100 years. Our fathers, our grandfathers, our great-grandfathers, they're the need for MSU Extension. It is an investment for our kids and for our grandkids. I myself am the ambassador for the National Garden Program. And I would hate for the National Garden Program to not encourage for MSU to build that. So I understand, like everybody said, money's tight. But it's an investment for your kids, for your grandkids, and for the generations downward. So if there was a way to find MSU, we'd get that.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else? No public comments? And I'll add, first of all, as part of this, I do want to create that revenue line for MSU. And I believe that the treasurer's office and the clerk's office can receive people if they brought donations in. I'm asking the treasurer's office. Do we have an idea what that revenue line item number could be? So you want to just, just the 101 line? So we'll, we'll figure out a way. The county board of commissioners can't advertise for this, but certainly I'll get that out. I'll talk with the paper about the county implementing a revenue line for MSU, and then bring donations to the treasurer's office. And I will talk to the individual that's interested in the 4-H portion of that, although we need to sit down with MSU here shortly, and look at what, how can we break that apart, you know, how can we guarantee the 4-H funding? And I believe that, you know, as tight as this community is, that's just a good start in the right direction. Again, we're more than willing to sit down with MSU and the directors and the networks sometime. Yes.
Josh Dixon, is that, is that on your, on page...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? It's not on Department 257, Call Off Extension?
Yeah, you're right. It's the upper right-hand corner, twenty-three dash sixty-four.
Eight dash sixteen.
Eight dash sixteen on my... It says Call Off Extension.
Okay. Oh, you have, you have a condense one, sorry. Go ahead.
Is that, so I'm looking at possible donations of $38,000 if we adopt it the way it is now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I would ask that the commissioners consider putting that amount in the paper or, you know, talking in specifics in the article?
Sure.
So people know what our target is. You know, it's, it's one thing to ask for donations and contributions towards 4-H, another thing to know what the target is, okay?
Fair enough.
That will fund that through the end of next year?
Yeah, we're, you know, that'll get it through next year, yeah. And essentially, what we have going on, there was a 120-day notice that we had to give MSU, although that's not been sent out. And if we had contributions in the neighborhood of $38,000 within the next 120 days, obviously have it funded through this year. I'm not personally too worried about that, but we'll see how that, that funding comes in.
So we're funding now through April?
Right.
Okay.
And we have some time, you know. Sherri?
Yeah, thank you. MSU Extension Coordinator, District Coordinator, just, I want you to be really careful about separating 4-H from MSU on that. And if anybody's making donations, you make them to MSU, not to 4-H. We can't separate those two. We can't have 4-H in this county if we don't have MSU in this county. And right now, with the support staff salary and the amount for the assessment for MSU in the county, the county needs a total of $60,000. So that's where you're coming up with your, that's what the difference is in there, okay? Just so we know that that's our target.
Can you explain why we cannot have 4-H without the rest of the MSU?
Yeah, that would take probably a really long time to do, but in a nutshell, it, it is an MSU program. We can't have it in the state anywhere without MSU.
Without the rest of the program.
Right. And frankly, I would hate to see the rest of MSU not in this county.
As well, both of them.
Yeah. The $38,000 assessment fee covers a half of a full-time equivalent 4-H coordinator position, the salary and the benefits. So that's almost $38,000 to begin with. And then there's a little bit more in there to help cover the operating expenses to have extension, all of extension in the county.
So we have $39,000 of that.
And just be mindful that, you know, we do want to sit down with MSU and, and work through this. You know, we're not evicting you. We're not shutting the heat and lights and phone lines off. We actually have that, you know, budgeted in there. So at the end of the day, our numbers have to balance, and our proposed budget is exactly balanced. That's no contingency. And that's if every revenue is collected exactly so. And in my history here, over the nine years, we've never collected what we thought. So we certainly hope we can do that. It's very attainable, working together. But yet again, we've got our challenges.
That line item created is going to be an MSU reimbursement fraud?
Yeah. Yeah, because they can't, like she's saying, and we'll work through some of those details with them, but I think $38,000 is attainable, and we'll see what else we can work out. Anything else from the public? Anything from the board and comments from the board members?
I just want...
I, yeah.
I felt, okay, this was, you know, proposed as a public safety millage. And most of the jobs, a lot of the jobs that were proposed to be cut, I mean, anything to do with public safety. And I feel like something was not asked about that whole millage request. And to see someone who's maybe, you know, spent a lifetime almost working in this, for this facility, to be threatened with a job loss, you know, come out of the blue, that's really sad. And I really hope that you will consider that, that what was proposed as a millage, you know, this is what we needed for public safety, but it's really not public safety that's really being affected as much, somewhat. But that, I think, did to be expressed.
I understand your thought there, but there was, if we received that millage, $820,000, that we would roll over to public safety sector, and then that would alleviate the general fund of that $820,000. So we had those funds for these other programs. And yes, it's complicated, but we did have a millage committee that worked on that, and that was the recommendation. And it's not a perfect world, and we're really certainly not trying to hide anything from this community. There's no, no funds to hide, and that was part of the goal when we had somebody from the outside that don't have names, uncles, nieces, and nephews sitting here working for Gladwin County to tell us, do we have a million bucks hidden somewhere? You know, we're essentially broke. It's, you know, we've been very straightforward. Our financials are on our website, gladwinco.com. Please go there, look at them. We're going to try to keep them updated. We'll try to post this. It won't be easy not having the financial coordinator here, but we'll move forward as a community, together as one. We'll figure this out. Anything else on the book? We know that you're, you're very important, and we need you. We'll work through that, just like Josh said. It's for kids and fair and programs. It brings a lot into the community, and it's a good program, a great program. Yes. John Blaze?
John Blaze. I'm on the Ball Fair, that coordinator up there. Is there any chance at all that there would be another millage election, let's say, three or four months down the road? I mean, how much did that actually fail by?
Two hundred votes? Hundred and twenty-seven votes.
I'll bet you if you had another millage, I'll bet you it'd pass this time. I'd almost guarantee it. Because what you're looking at cutting is a lot. And I think once the people realize there isn't a million dollars hidden somewhere, it's reality, you know, it's a gut check. And that's something I think the commissioners should think about. I know it's going to be added cost at each election and the townships and stuff, but I'll bet you it would pass this time. A hundred and twenty-seven votes out of what, 2,500?
I don't remember. You would know better than me.
I think it was 1,300 to 1,400, something like that. But that's something I think should be considered strongly. And everybody here has invested interest in Gladwin County. That's why here I stand here and look at people that I'm at school with, and, you know, whose school was Gladwin County, tells you how much their concern is. Maybe we didn't do our homework as much as we should have and got people off the vote. I know I made it to the election 15 minutes before they closed, just so me and my family could go down. Other people I know said, nah, it's not that big a deal. Well, when you see the cuts that are actually made, I think it will be. So I think that's something that, you know, before you, you know, you're like, yeah, it costs. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, but I think everybody here will make the right choice when it comes down to it, not just for a job, but for the overall concern of Gladwin County. So that's, I think, thank you.
I'm going to fill this out there only because I, I like to live in danger. How many people, just by head nodding, would rather this be a general fund millage versus public safety? How many would rather it just be general fund operating?
With good explanation.
With a good explanation, yeah.
You can't just lay it out there. You got to explain what the effects are going to be with the failure. I think that would be a lot of...
Okay. Thank you all. We'll go back to our budget, and we have a resolution that's been prepared for us that adopts our budget. And our commissioners have that before them. And we also have, our wonderful equalization director gave us such a detailed millage spreadsheet on the very back, and we'll use that number to plug in for our 2013 millage rates. And I entertain a motion to accept this budget with our 2014 proposed budget. It's been moved and supported.
So this resolution is adapting both your budgets?
Yep, along with the 2013. That's the first time you've ever said that. Madam Clerk, please call over.
Commissioner Crowell is absent. Commissioner Walters, Commissioner Reed...
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington...
Yes.
Commissioner Burgel...
Yes.
Are there any other comments from the board members? I will make another comment. Again, I just want to assure you that, you know, we're in there together, and regardless of what this board does, you know, rounding the corner next year, some recommendations of millages and different things, absolutely, we can consider any and all of those. We've been asking for input for some time. It would be awesome if we could get this many people to all our board meetings, so we could share some of these ideas. It's just very helpful for us when you have a broader group. But certainly, we look forward to working with you guys in the future. So anything else from the board or public? Sherri?
Yeah, regarding another millage, if we go through with one for operations, I just want you all to know right up front that because MSU employees are funded with public dollars, they can't legally work on it. So we're going to really depend on all of you guys, all of the stakeholders here.
Who in here would support another millage?
Me? I wouldn't. You know, every local government's got the same issue. It's across the states, across the country. We don't have, the population or the economic activity's not there. Sometimes we have to make tough decisions. I don't blame this board for having to make these cuts. What are they supposed to do? Are these guys the bad guys? They have a budget to work with, and we're worried about the fair. I'd be more worried about not having a county at all, a sovereign, independent county of Gladwin where we have a voice. And if we keep on pushing and go beyond our budgets, we'll be like Detroit. Now, we could go get a millage, but our school wants a millage, Gladwin, Beaverton, you know, it's relentless. Every, every cycle, we're asking for more money, but the people are leaving. What are we supposed to do? People like me wonder what the threshold is, you know? Where does, where does it stop? Everyone has their own little pet project they want funded, you know? So these guys are going to make a tough decision, and I think we're going to get used to it, and it's going to work out. We don't have any choice. Now, as far as the fair goes, if it's that important, we'll fund it locally somehow, right?
I got a comment to that. I own property in six townships. I hate to say I own property in West Branch. I had an apartment get kicked in up there. The police in West Branch did not feel it was important to send an officer out to my building, which will vandalize by next tenant for three days. I had somebody beaten out the door inside my garage. I called the sheriff department here. I get somebody there in 20 minutes. That means something to me. And when it happens to you guys, it'll mean something to you too. We have very good support in this county, and I don't want to lose it. When I call somebody and say I'm three quarters of a mile out of town, and you can't send a car out here for three days, what if somebody's getting killed? You know what he said? We'll call the state police. I said, maybe I'll call the state police. You know what he told me? They won't show up for a meeting either. There you go. The fair will be here next year. I don't care what anybody says, what they do, we'll take care of ourselves.
And that's what we need to start doing. That's what we need to start doing. Because we're relying too much on, on higher governments to give us kickbacks for our property taxes. This EVIP thing's a joke. That needs to be addressed once this budget's talked about and finalized next year. We should talk about how we're getting screwed by the state by taking our taxes, giving it to them, and then jumping through hoops to give it back. But then we're still relying on higher, on levels of government. We should be taking care of ourselves. We could do it a lot better without them, I think.
To some degree, and I've echoed this before in many of my township meetings and different meetings, we really have to pay attention to state government and what they're doing to our local communities, very specifically Gladwin County. If you look what's happened to Gladwin and how we've got here, and the property values, the state has nothing to do with. Our property value's been slipping, the economy's off. I don't know why Gladwin County hasn't slipped back up yet. It looks like next year we'll be even. But when it comes to revenue sharing and personal property taxes and some of these other laws and legislation that's been passed repeatedly the last few years, it cuts Gladwin County's revenue, and 82 other counties in the state of Michigan as well. So we really need to watch how much they're defunding county governments. Just pay attention to that, watch who you're voting for, be very mindful of what's going on. It's nerve-wracking to me that a few short years ago, they wanted township government to merge with county government. We all voted here on no way. We need our local township government. That's the first and closest neighbor that you can go to and shake his hand and get an answer from. Same thing with county government. I'm always available. People stop by the lumberyard or my house or here. Try getting ahold of a state rep sometime. Try going to Lansing. I've had promises that the governor's office was supposed to meet with me. Still hasn't happened. No return phone calls or emails anymore. So I promise you, we need to pay attention to our local governments, but that's my pitch, so, sorry. Yes?
I want to apologize, Mr. Blaze, and everyone here. I get a little excited, you know, and everyone here's here for a reason, because they are a little bit upset at what's going on. Everyone for a different reason. But I really do believe that we need to watch the regionalism. We need to watch the blending. And if we don't maintain this county government body, we'll have no choice but to blend, and then we will lose our voice as a county. Our townships will be dissolved. That's what we're up against. If we are not careful with our budgets, we need to maintain our county. We need to maintain our townships. That's what I'm, that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Just one comment about this 4-H program and the MSU program. The bottom line is, it all boils down to feeding our families. It's all, it's the farmers, it's the, it's the, it's the people, the girlies, and boy, it's all about feeding our families. And it's very, very important, you know? It's, it's, it's county life here. I mean, it not just affects us, but it affects everybody in the county.
You don't think that the fair gets paid from the county, do you?
Do I think the fair gets paid?
By the county?
By the county.
Because you mentioned that comment there that, you know, about the fair, we're self-supporting.
Okay.
We don't get no money from the county at all.
We don't get any from the state.
Or the state. The state. So we, whatever we do there at the fair, the fair brings, you know, our own money in. We, we had to make our own cuts. We cut $17,500 on payroll this year. So all of our...
No unpaid employees.
No unpaid employees this year.
Okay. So I don't know all the details of that. I'll be honest about it. But what bothers me is that we have a major issue with the funding of our county, and a lot of people are here for the MSU.
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
But that's not just 4-H. That's the food nutritious group. There's a lot in the, in the MSU extension group.
It's huge. It affects many, many people.
The biggest industry in Gladwin is, you know... Yeah. The biggest industry in Gladwin is agriculture.
Are there any other comments from the public of this board? Carrying none, I do plead a motion to proceed, Mr. Ball. Favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Sherry supports. It's been moved and supported. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. Look forward to talking to you in the very near future.
Thank you, Jeff.